Good evening. It's 5:30, and I'm going to call the meeting in the New London Select Board Order. I would ask that anyone who would like to speak tonight, if you do, please come to the podium and state your name and speak into the microphone. Our first order of business is Sherri Williams and Steve Solomon. They're going to talk about roof replacement and other repairs for the library.
Thank you. I am Sherri Williams. And the board -- I'm going to move this for just a second. Board of Trustees for the library. We're here to update you on board actions taken last night by the trustees.
Microphone.
Sure. Update you on board actions taken by the trustees last night regarding our bond request and revised capital reserve request, deposit request. And I hope that you have two documents from me. One is the memo that goes through the details of the deposit request and the revision of the capital reserve budget. If you've had a chance to review that and have questions, I'm happy to address those, or I can walk you through the salient points. Whichever you prefer.
As far as I'm concerned, Sherri, you were clear at the last meeting about what the need was.
About what?
You were clear at the last meeting about what the need was, or Steve was.
Right. We have new information.
Okay.
And so that's why we're here. As you recall, the last time we were here, the bond request was triggered by a surprising report from a roof inspection that indicated that it was failing faster than anticipated, and we needed to move quickly. They suggested that repairs be made in fiscal year, or in 2024, by fall of 2024. Since then, we have had a second inspection, and that company states that the overall slate roof is in good condition, and that the front section could survive many more years with routine maintenance.
That's interesting.
That's interesting. And so, given these conflicting opinions, the trustees decided to take a pause. We're going to defer the bond request that included the roof replacement and seek the advice of an independent engineering professional regarding the condition of the roof. And while that's going on, to minimize the risk of roof issues in the short term, we will schedule the smaller slate roof repair project recommended by the second bidder and do that work in early fiscal year 2025. The major exterior building repairs that you'll recall were also a part of that bond request, also need to be completed in fiscal year 2025, or early 2025, to reduce the risk of further deterioration and the risk of mold and moisture issues. So last night, the trustees voted to use capital reserves to fund the exterior building repairs and the smaller slate roof repair in fiscal year 2025, and we revised the library's capital reserve deposit request and the capital reserve budget as follows. Increase the capital reserve deposit request from $37,500 to $60,000. Remove the proposed $60,000 capital reserve expenditure to rebuild the stone walls and remove trees. And add a $60,000 capital reserve expenditure to complete the major exterior building repairs and the smaller slate roof project. And let me just note about the stone walls. We were very fortunate to have someone come forward who can do the repairs for a cost that does not make it necessary for us to tap capital reserves, which is great news. So then, just a final note on the deposit request. By increasing the deposit request to 60,000 and redirecting the $60,000 expenditure from the stone wall repair to the roof and exterior building repairs, that allows us to maintain a capital reserve balance of $88,869. And all of that was approved by the trustees last night.
Great.
And I did send the documents to Kim this morning, so if you don't have them, you'll have an opportunity to review them later. Are there any questions, Kim?
I'm sure she sent them. I haven't been at my desk pretty much all day, so I will send them to them soon as I get back to the office.
That's fine.
Bill, did you have something?
I guess the only clarification I'd like to share, that's great news, is the selectmen had proposed, in the budget that we sent to the Budget Committee, a $100,000 deposit before all of the roof issues came up, because we wanted to begin to build that account up. I assume the trustees would not be distressed if we put more in than you're asking for.
I don't think they would be upset about that at all. I'm sorry, I should have introduced my colleagues, Jerry Krugman and Steve Solomon. Oh, Tom. My whole posse is here. It's great.
Given what you've just said, the Budget Committee may not agree with us, but if you -- there are piles of documents floating around right now, but on those, you will see a $100,000 number as our original proposal.
Okay.
So I guess what I would say is, potentially, we may reduce that to 60,000, is what you're saying.
Yeah, right.
All right, we're good. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for the opportunity to come back and give you an update. I mean, it was the second bid that triggered all of this. It's just, they're so far apart.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sherri, we have a question, someone?
Is this their way time?
Yeah. If it's about the library.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Bob Lyon, Brookside Drive. So, yeah, that is fantastic news. I expected to come here tonight and hear that $375,000, so that's fantastic. Question I have, and Jerry, you know this, we talked about it on the chairlift at Ragged the other day. Has the board --
But that was not an official meeting.
That was not an official meeting, no. We didn't take minutes, no minutes on that one. Yeah, we didn't videotape it. Has the library board ever considered, and I was still in the mindset of you had to get $375,000, but given that we have that now, actually, it might even make my point stronger, since we have more time, has the board ever considered doing a capital campaign to raise funds through donations for the library? And what I was going to propose tonight, before I heard about you might not need that money, go for 500,000 and make it a community donation appeal. And I was talking to a friend about this, and they said, "Well, who would you hit up for this?" And I said, "Anybody with a library card. We have all that data. They get a flyer in the mail." I think it's an alternative way, you know, our town, we have a lot of big-ticket items coming up, so anytime we can save money anywhere, that's my thinking. And I feel so strongly about this. I will promise you a donation of $100 if you go ahead and do this. I'll be the first donor to kick this off, but I think it's something to think about. And you can have that little thermometer, like out in front of them, like they used to have for United Appeal, "How are we doing?" And I think you could get half a million dollars. I think you could do it in six months. So it's something, please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, for the idea. That's a good idea. To my knowledge, the library has not done a capital campaign in the past. I don't know, but it's certainly something that I will take back to the trustees and we'll discuss.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right, we're good. Okay, thank you. Thank you all for coming. The next item on our agenda is, we want to hear from the Conservation Commission. John Doyle is here, and I'm not sure who else is speaking to this issue about fevers.
Messer Pond Association.
What did I say? Oh, sorry.
I'm vertically challenged. So my name is Audrey Chisner. I'm president of the Messer Pond Protective Association, MPPA, which is a volunteer-based community association, 501(c)(3), can't say that wrong, corporation whose purpose is to oversee the well-being of Messer Pond and its surrounding -- what is it? More? Okay, I'll bring it way down. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Why we're here is that Messer Pond is, I think we had some overheads, did that skip? No? Okay. Messer Pond is in its fourth year of water flow crisis. The inlet and outlet paths are both on conservation lands, and we've been working with the Conservation Commission to remediate the problem. Tonight, we're here at the suggestion of the Conservation Commission, because I'm going to call CONCOM, because it's just easier, to request emergency funding to CONCOM to address the immediate need in two wetland areas that border Messer Pond, to voice support for the establishment of a CIP, watershed stewardship, watershed stewardship fund going forward to monitor and address situations like the one we're about to describe on all townlands, and to support the budget increase requested by the CONCOM. Since July of 2021, the overall average water level in Messer Pond has risen about 10 to 12, excuse me, 12 to 15 inches. We believe, based upon expert evaluation and input, that this is due in large part to restricted flow through the Messer Clark Pond watershed area, which is wetland, that is conservation land. When the level on the chart that we can't see, and I didn't bring a copy of it, reaches a certain point where it has been pretty much leveling out in the last couple of years, there's no flow, though it's just stagnant water, basically. So over the last three and a half years, while we've been dealing with this, the problems we're having is the inability for the watershed to manage a large storm event, which leads to flooding, erosion of the shoreline, flooding and sinkholes on Bog Road and County Road, flooding in homes along the pond, and a change in the wetland, meaning weed growth, because there's no water flowing to keep the weeds down, which only exacerbates the flow problem. So now, in addition to the dams, we have weeds. During that time, I got to bring it down here, can stop that talk. During that time, we presented graphs and drone footage to CONCOM. However, because they're constrained by lack of funds and resources, I don't think this is really kind of part of their budget, the minor interventions that they have been able to do have not been sufficient. The flow problems continue to persist, and the situation has only deteriorated. The MPPA then engaged, we, $4,500 of our money, we hired an engineering firm, a wetland scientist, to assess the area and provide an objective outside opinion on the causes of the situation and recommendations for corrected backdune. A critical conclusion was that damage, the damage caused by these issues, if left unaddressed, will compound, and the cost to remediate will also increase significantly. You know, basically, if you don't maintain the house, it's going to cost you more in the long run. And based on the Stony Ridge Environmental, that's the company we used, report, they have a two-pronged approach to manage, to deal with the situation. One is to immediately remediate the flow issues at both the inlet and the outlet, and the second is long-term maintenance. The immediate remediation is to deal with the dams, and I had a great picture. Unfortunately, didn't get it as soon enough. And we have four dams at the inlet and four dams at the outlet. And, I mean, we have drone footage that shows that just, you see the water, and then you see the dam, and then there's land and weeds. So it's a very, it's a significant issue. So our request is threefold. One is the short term. MPPA estimates a cost of about $5,000 to deal with the immediate issues that currently threaten the shoreline erosion, the road and basement flooding, and overall water quality. And we respectfully request that the board allocate $5,000 to CONCOM to specifically address these issues. Second, long-term, we recognize that Messer Pond is not the only pond and lake affected by water flow issues in the watershed, and this actually came up in the CONCOM meeting, I guess yesterday. And we recognize that not every watershed is also not conservation land. So we propose that the town establish a SIP watershed stewardship fund going forward for watershed flow and assessment and maintenance of all water arrays in town. And actually, watershed is really the issue we're talking about, and to identify the watershed areas, allow the areas to be monitored by drones, it would be, like, throw drones over it every now and then, and then maintain the funding for the mediation. And, you know, what they basically said, if you keep it, keep on top of it, then it's not, you know, obviously, it's not going to, you're not going to have a big problem. And right now, basically, the pond is stagnated. It's like, you don't flush a toilet. That's kind of what's happening in our pond. And the fish are going to die. I mean, there's just, she went on and on about it's going to, like, the animals are going to die, and da-da-da. I won't get too dramatic here, but, anyway. And the third thing is that Messer Pond, I would like to extend our support to the budget request by the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Kim, do you have some information about this?
Well, I see some Conservation Commission members here, so they may want to review what happened yesterday at the meeting.
Okay, Mike?
Mike Elches, I'm the vice chair of the Conservation Commission. We did have a productive meeting yesterday, and we talked about some of the issues that were just brought up. I wanted to clarify a few things tonight. I think that what we felt is important is to understand our thinking on the funding. We obviously have a budget that we go through pretty quickly every year for the standard maintenance of the trails and town properties and all, so having an event that is over and above what we're normally dealing with is a challenge for us. Now, we do have funds in a savings account, monies that have come in there, some of which come in from the tree harvesting, and we feel that it would be appropriate for us to allocate resources from that section of that fund to do the immediate actions that are needed on Messer Pond to try to get everything back to where it should be. However, I guess there's a philosophical issue that things we can do as opposed to things we should do. We feel that some of the monies that were given into the savings fund were earmarked for certain specific things. That's why they were donated to us. The tree harvesting, obviously, is just money coming into the Conservation Commission and therefore can be used for whatever the Conservation Commission feels is appropriate. Some of the other monies, maybe not so much. In a long-winded way, what I'm trying to get at is that we feel that, long-term, it would be good to have additional funding for actions that need to be taken that are over and above the normal actions that we take year to year. And that's what was just presented, is the idea of creating a special fund for that purpose. We also understand, obviously, that it's our role as a Conservation Commission to be able to be stewards of the properties that we have. And obviously, when there are special actions that are needed, we want to be able to respond. You know, currently, we do have money in our savings account to be able to address Messer Pond, but those are monies that we don't always have increases to. So that's why we're interested in trying to present our feeling on what's going on with those monies and how we might deal with that moving forward.
All right. Bill, did you want to comment on this? Bebe?
I've met with Audrey and John earlier in the fall and heard all about this issue, and I was also at the concert, CONCOM, meeting that they were at a few months ago as well, and listened to them, present to them. I'm fully in support of making sure you all get the funds to fix this problem. This is not a new problem in that area. I grew up next to Clark Pond, and it's always been an issue in that area with beaver activity. So I would also be in favor of a maintenance of some sort program, the drone monitoring or whatever, to try to stay on top of it so it doesn't get like this before. The Messer Pond Association has done so much great work to protect your area and your homes, and it's, you're a model for other protective associations, so I really appreciate all the work that you all have done.
Okay. I guess my thought would be, since you have funds available to do this in your conservation, the tree fund or whatever it is, I think I would suggest that you go ahead and use that. And then, next year, when you need money, when you do your budget, you can say, "Look, this is how we've spent our money. We didn't ask for any more last year, but we can, now we're going to need, going forward, we're going to need money to deal with some of these issues."
Absolutely. We will be using that fund for that remediation.
Okay.
And we've also, and I think you know that, we've contacted people to work on clearing that problem. So that's in the process right now.
That's great. That's wonderful. Okay, we didn't know that, that's why we asked for the funds.
Yes, well, that happened today, so we've got that going.
It's happening on the line.
Yes, so just so you know.
That's great, thank you. That's awesome.
Okay.
And kudos to the Messer Pond Association, I mean, with regard to taking a poll of septic systems and what condition they're in, that sort of thing, that's really proactive, and it's truly appreciated. So thank you.
Yeah, do a great job.
Thanks, Mike.
The other question was--
If you would talk into the mic.
Back to the microphone, Audrey. Audrey, back to the microphone, please.
Bring it down here. The other thing was, is my concern was, because when people were talking about other lakes that they live on, that aren't, their watersheds aren't necessarily conservation land, but they're townland, and how, you know, just kind of this kind of thinking forward, how that might help other cons as well. If that, you know, if it would fall on them or somewhere else in town, it seems like they should get the funds to help with other townland to deal, if you're going to have a drone program for the wetlands, you might as well do all the wetlands. So, I don't know, that's for you guys to work out.
All right. Okay, thanks, Audrey. All right. Okay, we're good on this? Yeah? All right. Are there any public's comments about anything that's not on our agenda tonight? John?
Yeah, about two months ago, there was a study being done with the Collyer's group for the police, and there was a five-step program that you had committed to on starting through the process of looking at the renovation of the existing police department or a new location. And I haven't seen any reports on that that we could review, and I wondered when there could be a timetable for that to be done and what steps we're at on that program.
Well, there's no timetable, but, Kim, you speak to Tony frequently?
Yep. They are soliciting a request for proposal from consultants to do some, what's the word I'm looking for? Renderings, yes, thank you, chief. Renderings of what the site, what the facility could potentially look for. So I would expect that we'll have that within a month or so.
And that's on the three proposed properties that we're looking at?
Yes.
And we would get that by February?
I don't know. I would say a month. I'd say four weeks.
Okay. So somewhere around the 18th of February. And the other steps, when are they proposing to provide those reports?
Once the selectmen gets this information, then they will decide how they're going to move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Okay, Kim, you want to tell us about the budget with regard to dispatching and public works? Lynn, who was talking about this?
I was going to move this down a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have two department budgets that need to be amended. One, we, I think we mentioned last week, two weeks ago, the highway department, and I just, you have the memo from Bob Harrington on that, so I wanted to make note of that. And the chief has had to amend her dispatching budget by $6,000. And I think you have the memo on that, the software support.
So we need a motion to accept?
Yeah, so, yeah.
So I move that we accept the amended proposals for dispatching and public works in the FY 2025 budget.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thanks. All right, we have a petition warrant article, which I'm going to read. It states, "Unlike the petition last year that I voted to support, this petition is," oh, I'm sorry, I haven't read the petition. Whoops, I got ahead of myself. "to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $900,000 for the purpose of, one, purchasing the McEnroe Trust property fronting on Siemens Road, map 85 light 003, currently assessed for $435,900 for future town use as may be determined, with the intent that it will provide protection for town property as it abuts the current Whipple Hall property in the town green. And, two, applying the funds remaining after such purchase for improvements to the police department to enhance safety and improve working conditions there. Furthermore, to authorize issuance of $900,000 of bonds or notes in compliance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, NHRS-A33:1 at SEC, as amended, and to authorize the board of selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes to determine the rate of interest thereon." So we're going to consider that. And unlike the petition last year that I voted to support, this petition is for property that the owner was not asked if she was okay with an article being included on the warrant for a voted town meeting to purchase her property. Also, the police department has made it clear that they do not want to expand their facility into the neighboring property. Purchasing this property at some point in the future may be desirable. The town cannot afford to purchase a piece of property that may or may not be needed in the future. Until that time, the property serves the town's need much better by remaining a residential home. We are working to provide the police department with a new facility at long last that will serve the town's needs for decades into the future. A new facility will not be an inexpensive project, so spending $900,000 now on property that will not advance the more immediate need of a new police facility is not a responsible use of taxpayer funds. For these reasons, I am not in favor of recommending this petition." Okay, Bill, you have comments?
I agree wholeheartedly with what you've just stated, Janet.
Bebe?
I agree with you, with what you just stated. I appreciate the petitioners filing the warrant article, so we can continue further conversations, but I agree with the comments that you made.
Okay. I move that the board does not recommend the petition to purchase the McEnroe property. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Kim, you were going to discuss ARPA funds.
No, I think next is the equalization and ratio study.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
This is something that's done each year.
Are you entertaining questions, or are we moving on?
We're moving on.
There's no questions. There's no public debate, there's no interaction.
Not on that. No, we're all, we just agreed that we're not in favor of the petition.
So that means it's dead?
No. No, it goes to the Budget Committee, and they will recommend or not recommend that.
But this still goes on the vote?
It still will go on the warrant.
I just want, my question was more, I didn't hear what you had said initially as part of it. Did you say the--
Come to the microphone, please, Bob.
Yeah, my question was more a clarification, I didn't hear what you had said. Did you say the owner was not comfortable, the owner of the property was not comfortable having that property on the petition for a town vote? Is that what I heard?
No. She was opposed, she was not in favor of it. She was never asked if she supported this.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify what I heard.
Yeah, she didn't know anything about it.
Thank you, got it.
Okay. All right, you were going to talk about, Chris?
Okay, so the State Department of Revenue requires the town to give information about sales and our assessment values. So they look at all that information, and they come up with an assessment ratio, and as the information that was posted online suggests, we came in at 97.2%, which is, which is good. I mean, the closer to 100% you can get, obviously, is the best, so 97.2% is acceptable. And she also included some, you know, information on recent sales, and, you know, when I discussed, I had a meeting with her today, sales are still coming in higher than assessment, so the market is not cooling, and that reflects the 97.2%. You know, some people think their assessments are too high, but the 97.2% suggests that, by and large, they're not too high, and in fact, some are still selling for more than assessed value. So as time goes on, if that continues, if sales continue to be higher than assessment, you'll see that number go down. We were in the 60 or 70%, which is why we did the update, so. But I think it's, I think that 97.2 is a testament to the, to the good work that the assessors did in that project.
Okay. Do we need to take any, we don't need to take any--
No, it's, you know, DRA is just laying, you know, that's what it is. Chris gave a lot of information to kind of explain a somewhat complex process.
Right, yeah. Okay. So now going to ARPA funds, you want to talk to that?
Right, so I know the Budget Committee is talking about ARPA funds, and, so Lynn, do you have the totals?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. We, as everybody knows, we got a little bit over $400,000 to begin with. 440? 440?
$450,000 and change. And we've, we committed a quarter of it to the water precinct, a quarter to the sewer, and then left us with half of 225,50151. We purchased the school bleachers for $37.5, and we paid for a portion of the body and dash cameras for the PD at $56,960. That leaves a balance of $131,04151.
Okay. So I know there will be pressures to use that money. We do need to commit it this year, and I just want to remind the selectmen, for one, you're considering using those funds for the Colliers study. And another project that I think is worth considering is the security upgrades and office upgrades to the Academy Building. We had a safety study done in 2022, and I think that that is something that we should consider using the funds for, too. We do have the Capital Reserve Fund for building maintenance, which could be used in part as well, depending on what we do. But I think that's something that you should keep in mind and, you know, help the Budget Committee understand what funds that you've already committed before, you know, as they work through their process.
Questions, Bill?
I don't have questions as much as a sense that we should take care of this issue and commit the rest of the funds to two projects. One is to the Academy Building upgrades, and the second is to the continuing study of the potential police facility.
I've got a motion that, BB, do you have any?
I agree.
Okay. Therefore, I move to commit the balance of the ARPA funds for improvements to the Academy Building and professional services associated with the planning of a new police and dispatch facility. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item is the dedication of the 2023 town report. And I think you all have seen my suggestions. Helen Tucker, Carlton Bradford, and Aidan Larson. Did you want to add anyone, or was there anybody that I overlooked? Helen Tucker.
That's fine with me. I think those are three excellent choices.
They've all given a great deal of service to the community, so.
The only other one I was thinking of was Jerry Carney.
Who? I'm sorry.
Jerry Carney. Was he the judge?
No, no.
I got the wrong person?
Yeah, it was Graham. And Jerry was.
Okay. Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So do I have a motion for those three people to have the town report dedicated to?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I should have asked that to Kim. Sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
All right, we did that. All right. Kim, Town Administrator's Report.
Everybody's very busy trying to get budgets together and various other things that have been popping up. I did have lunch last week with Tom Mannion of the hospital, Sue Stubner of the college, Winfried Bennerberg of the school, and the deputy or Assistant Superintendent Michael Vasse. And we had a really good meeting, talking about things that are going on in the school and an initiative they're doing with students, having a program where, you know, students from kindergarten all the way through, you know, have certain values that they bring in, communication skills and those kinds of things. It's really quite an exciting program, I think. They've done a lot of work on it, and they had us there to kind of hear from the institutions in town what we thought about it, and it's something I'm going to go through with department heads. Although it's for students, I think that a lot of people could benefit from that. So we'll talk about it at our next department head meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. Committee meetings and reports. BB, do you have anything?
The Budget Committee met last week and finished up reviewing all of the items for all the regional agencies and the protective associations, and then we meet tomorrow to go over the Capital Reserve transfers and deposits.
Bill, do you have anything? Okay, the Planning Board met last week and to discuss some items for the zoning amendment, and three things, three of them regarding cluster subdivision, plan unit development, and what was the third one? And I guess those three, there were three things that they all continued until the next Planning Board meeting, because there were a lot of questions about the wording and how it would affect the town. So that will take place at their next Planning Board meeting, which is next Tuesday. This morning, Kim and I attended a tri-town assessing meeting and talked about the assessing process that happened in New London. New London has 10 people that have requested abatements on their property, and Sunape had eight, that's all. But the next town that's going to be reassessed is Newbury. So they've been pleased with how it went in New London.
Right, and the deadline's March 1st, so we could get more in. Hopefully, we don't, but we could.
Right. But there are only 10 at this point.
Janet, I was out of town for the monthly meeting of the Water Commission, but I wondered if the Epsteins were there and could tell us what happened, if anything of interest? I know you always go, or Peter Nichols, were you there?
No, I couldn't.
Okay. Karen, you're on, if you don't mind. You're so loyal that.
We try not to miss one. Karen Epstein, just a citizen, attending a lot of meetings, in particular, the water precinct. They talked about them, because I don't have any notes with me, and I usually don't take notes, so that doesn't matter. But what I do recall is the posting for the Main Street project went in the paper that previous week, or right around, I think January 8th, was it? But it was the posting, or the advertisement for the water project was just put in the newspaper. So they are waiting to get responses from contractors, and once they get that, they'll be able to make their assessments and move forward. So from our perspective, it was a rather quiet meeting. So that was, I think, the most important topic, Kevin. Do you agree? My husband? Right, thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Quiet is sometimes good.
Yeah.
The topic now prompted a question. I meant to bring the town paper, because it quoted you, Bill. And I remember this coming up, so if I had the article, I'd be able to give it word-for-word. But when, I think, the Energy Committee was here, and they talked about Phase III power, and I thought you said something about Phase III power is somehow being considered for the Water Department. And I don't remember that coming up in the Water Department meetings, so I'm doing a bad job at recalling specifically.
I understand what you're referring to. The Energy people were talking about the fact that if you were to consider the Mountain Road town land for solar panels, that getting Phase III power there would be quite a chore because of the distance.
Right.
And I made the comment that when the Water Commissioners were talking about water alternatives, one of the things they noted was that they, too, were worried about Phase III power, and that the nearest power for them serves Colby Point. And I made the comment, well, that's at least closer than Mountain Road.
Okay.
And that at some point, the town, I'm watching Bob Harrington now, that at some point, the town might want to talk to the Water Commissioners about Phase III power from that point to the stump-dump land, which the Energy Committee was also mentioned.
Okay.
So it was in the reference to how far away Phase III power is from the sites that they might be considering for solar panels.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. You're good? All right, do I, has everyone read the minutes of December 14th, 21st, and January 4th?
I have one, believe it or not, addition or correction. I just lost my place while I was talking to Rick. On January 4th, page 5, halfway down the page, Selectman Helm, blah, 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 in the second line, it says, however, the remaining funds that the board discussed, comma, decision, I think it was, it should say, however, with respect to the remaining funds that the board discussed. Otherwise, it's not clear. That sentence doesn't make any sense. That's.
Okay.
Probably because I stopped writing and then just started looking at a football game or something, I don't know. We've got to get a professional note taker here, I can tell you that. Because I'm sure those were my minutes, right?
Because of the significance right now of funds for the library, which we got helped with earlier tonight, and the Energy Committee discussion about the long-term multimillion-dollar projects there, I think it's important that that particular place, the record, be there. I realize it's just a recording issue, but nevertheless, it's there. And I did read it.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of December 14th, 21st, and January 4th as amended?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We were going to talk about future meetings, is that right? You wanted to go over that?
Yep.
So I, as you know, because I sent you a note today, was concerned that we don't have another regularly scheduled meeting till after the currently proposed date for the budget hearing, and that undoubtedly, we're going to want to meet and have an opportunity to discuss whatever recommendations the Budget Committee is planning to make to the town meeting. And since we're meeting with the sewer commissioners next Thursday anyway, why don't we piggyback on and have another regular meeting? That'll be following two more meetings of the Budget Committee. So that would be on the 25th at 6:30 here. And I don't know, BB, how your travel schedule is, so maybe that's not good for you, but...
No, that's fine. I don't have to travel till the end of February. So that's why I said, should we talk about February dates tonight as well?
So, and sewers usually at 5:00 or 5:30?
5:30.
Okay, so then we'll meet here afterwards?
Afterwards, at 6:00 here?
Okay.
6:00, okay.
So actually, we could probably meet here at 5:45, couldn't we? If we just do the sewers by Zoom?
Yeah, yeah, we could.
Because I mean...
Can we do Zoom here? Okay.
The other room?
With them? They seemed a little dicey about.
I'll check to see if they're still doing it, if they're having problems. They may not be doing Zoom anymore.
And is that at 5:00, the Sewer Commission meeting?
I think it was 5:00 or 5:30.
Okay.
Efficient use of the evening.
Right, yeah, all right. Okay. We're good? Now, what else did?
Also, on the list of upcoming meetings, I believe the Budget Committee tomorrow night is at 5:00, not 6:30, is that true?
That's true, 5:00. I think it says 5:00 on the website, because somebody mentioned...
If anybody's reading our agenda, who goes by, what's on the agenda?
Uh-huh.
The agenda that people have says 6:30.
It does. And I'm just saying, because somebody mentioned to me the other day that it was wrong on the website, and I double-checked, and it is right on the website, but it's not right on here on the agenda. Yeah, it is 5:00. So we keep our regular Selectmen's meeting on February 8th? And then, when do we have another, when do we need to have another Selectmen's meeting in February?
You're generally the second and fourth Thursdays are what your regular meetings are, and they only switch if somebody can't make it.
So I'm tentatively away that week of February, I won't know, that last week of February. I won't know for sure until probably a week or two before, but I can always zoom in, too, or you can meet without, it's up to you guys.
Okay. Well, why don't you find out, and then we can decide the next time we get together?
Okay. At least we have our next two dates that we can be posted.
We can decide as late as the 8th, right?
Okay. All right. I should know by the 8th.
Okay, good. Okay, is there any other business?
Have your blue folder there?
Besides the blue folder, nothing? Okay.
I'm going non-public? Yeah.
We're basically finished.
Are you going to?
I think BB wants...
Do I have to move?
Oh, okay.
I'm making a motion. I don't have all of the...
It's at the bottom of the agenda.
Not, okay, making a motion to go into non-public to discuss items listed under RSA 91-a:3...
To C.
Uh-huh. Yeah, for, do I have to give the reason?
Reputation.
For reputation of an employee.
Second.
Okay. Okay, and it has to be a voice vote? Janet, yes?
Bill, yes.
BB, yes.